Welcome, everybody. We are so thrilled to see everybody here in attendance for various reasons. Sometimes it feels a little bit like we're just talking to ourselves. So it's much better when we have a crowd and we thank you all for being here. I'm going to review the agenda quickly before we get going. Before we do that, I'd ask everybody to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonalko Carney.
Yes.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
We know it, all board members present. In a quick review of the agenda, we will start with communication. That begins with one of our favorite things, which is student recognition. We will then move on to an invitation for public comments. Following that, we will have our student school board representative reports. We have a FOIA request to review and a donation to acknowledge. And then we will hear some good news about things going on around the district. That will lead us to our consent vote agenda. These are items that we routinely review in committee. Is there any board members wishing to remove anything from our consent agenda this evening?
No.
Nope. Okay, so all of those items will be approved with one motion. For action, we have some individual items. Those coming out of the P and P committee include some renewals, agreements, a very important staffing report. And then when we move on to F and F, we have some bid recommendations and replacing some equipment that is at the end of its useful life. In our information section, we will have our superintendent's report. As well as an update on our D 128 community ed program. We will share some events that we've attended, some learning that we want to share. Do we have an ISB report this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening for ISB. Do we have a CEDAL report?
Yes.
Do? And any other reports that the board wishes to share, we will discuss future agenda items. We will convene in closed session. Tonight, that's for two things. We will discuss the employment of an employee under Illinois Code 5 ALCS 120 slash 2C1, as well as an item regarding collective negotiations matters under 5 ALCS 120 slash 2C2. When we reconvene in open session, we will be taking a vote and after that, for on the purpose of approving the superintendent's contract. And then after that, we will adjourn. So if we can get started, let's start with student recognition.
All right, let's do it. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Gilliam. I'm the principal of Vernon Hills High School. This is Dr. Tom Kalentis, Principal of Libertyville. We rarely get an opportunity to stand together and share the mic in this way. This is one of the favorite parts of the board meetings when we get to celebrate kids that have done great things. And this night in particular, we bring back a crew that is really becoming quite habitual here, our Special Olympics. And in this case, unified basketball, unified sports is an IHSA sport in which our Special Olympic athletes, as well as their partner peers, get to participate together in sports. And tonight, we get to celebrate unified basketball. So last weekend, our guys competed down in Peoria. Is that where we were? Champagne and brought home a second in state. So let's give them a hand. We're going to bring up Coach Andy Compton to do a little introductions and some more details. Andy, come on up.
Well, hello. It's good to be back. We're here. That means it was a very successful season. So that's awesome. Thank you for your support. And next year, all of you, I expect you had a game so good. But this year, awesome stuff. These guys went undefeated until the third quarter of the championship game. And we couldn't buy a bucket. But oh, man, did we compete till the end. I mean, they gave everything they had until the very end. Even had a young man here who broke a bone in his foot, who wanted to play so badly, and we needed him so badly. But unfortunately, he just couldn't do it that day, but we could have used him. But again, they gave everything they had to the end. Again, we were undefeated until we got to that point, had a tough semifinal game. We were ready for it, but Bradley Bourbonet was just a little bit too much for us. But again, I'm super proud of these guys. And I'd just like to recognize those guys that are here today. Some, a lot of guys aren't here today because there are other sports. But these guys deserve everything and more. First of all, let's go with David Dubois. He's right here. Eric I tell. Javi Granados. Zach Henderson. Brendan Larson. Chase Miller. And Cody Knuckles. And of course, our team would have been complete without our two coaches, Corey Outwell and Jeff Morello. And of course, I do want to give some love out there to our two principals who are really do a wonderful job promoting our team and everything and really support us 100%. John and Tom, thank you very much, as well as Deb Beagle, who's always behind us as well. So we really appreciate their support and really getting us out there. So thank you to you guys. Oh, Hozzy's here? Yes. Hey, Hozzy, sneak up behind me. Hozio Morales.
Hi, so coming out of the woodwork, my bad. Ben Peterson, of course, our three-point specialist.
There we go.
All right, we are good. Thank you. Thank you.
We're really proud of that unified team because of what it represents. Yes, it's really nice to win. But that unified team represents something much more than winning. It represents inclusion and all the best things that the daring mission represents. So thank you all for being here to congratulate that very special team. Okay, we are ready to move on to public comment. There will be a three-minute limit. So I ask that you please acknowledge when I, I'll let you know when that time is up. And I ask that you please do wrap it up when I signal that. I'm just going to go down the list of people who signed up in the order. First on the list, we invite Anne Landgraf to the podium.
Good evening. Hello, Dr. Herman. I've never met you before and a couple of board members I do know. My name is Anne Landgraf. I live in Vernon Hills. I used to serve on this board. I was on the other side of the table for 10 years and I finished my service in 2009. Prior to that election to the board, though, and what I would like to bring up today is I served on the steering committee that passed the referendum in 1997 to build this high school. And that helped to alleviate the crowding at Libertyville High School. Because before that, four referendums had failed. The passage of this referendum guaranteed that the students of the whole community would have adequate facilities for their education. And we were so proud to do that so that all the kids had opportunities. I was on the board during the transition from one high school to two, overseeing that two quality high school programs were developed and implemented in both buildings, along with equal opportunities in extracurriculars and sports. And at the same time, we encouraged each school to develop their own culture. I just wanted you to know that there was some consternation in the community at the time, if Vernon Hills High School could duplicate the excellent program that was already available at Libertyville High School. In fact, we had many parents come and talk to us and say, my kid had such, my older children had such a good education at Libertyville. Well, the same thing happened at Vernon Hills. And thankfully, we can say, oh, absolutely. The staff at both schools were driven to accomplish this task in the shortest amount of time. And I'm proud to say that both Vernon Hills High Schools and Libertyville High Schools are high-ranking schools in the state and in the country with myriads of opportunities for the students in addition to receiving a top-notch education. But why I'm here is it has come to my attention that the high school graduation ceremony at Vernon Hills High School continues to be held in the Vernon Hills gym. Now, when the classes were smaller and it was an intimate venue and there was a sense of extreme pride to be in the building where it all started. And I was one of those people there that when it was all started and it was so cool. But I think it's time that Vernon Hills families should be on equal footing with LHS families and move graduation to a larger venue so more family members are able to attend this milestone. Having attended many district graduations of my own children and then as my 10 years as a board member, I know that graduations are an occasion to be celebrated and to be shared. I will have three granddaughters graduating from Vernon Hills High School in the future. And I hope to be there, but if the graduation ceremony continues to be held in the gym, I will not be able to attend. After all my efforts on behalf of this district, along with all the efforts of the multitude of district staff members and community members to ensure equal opportunities for all students, no matter which building they attended, that would be a very bitter pill for me to swallow. I know this request needs discussion. And I'm sure there are factors involved at which I am unaware. But in conclusion, I would just like to see that Vernon Hills families are afforded equal opportunities in regard to their students' graduation ceremony that is enjoyed by all LHS families. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Nolan.
Well, after, I'm coming in behind that one. Mine's super short and sweet. But I do have to say, I was a graduate of Libertyville in 98. My brother was a graduate of Vernon Hills, so this is very close to my heart and my children of them also be graduating from Vernon Hills soon, hopefully. The school board is full of problem solvers for the whole district. When the student population got too large, we built a new high school. When we needed more athletic fields, we found the space to develop. Recently, we added new classrooms and gym space because that there was a need. Our new problem, Vernon Hills High School, has outgrown their gym for graduation. We need a new, larger space to accommodate the graduating class and their families. Libertyville High School does not have this problem. They have a venue. Without question, Vernon Hills deserves the same privilege that Libertyville has. Help us solve our new problem. This community implores the school door, the school board to direct the superintendent to solve this problem. When this problem is resolved, it will allow all graduating classes and their families to enjoy this milestone together. Thank you.
Next, we have Akshaya Karadigatu.
Hello. Hello, my name is Akshaya Karadigatu and I'm a sophomore at Vernon Hills High School. Me and my family have been proud residents of Vernon Hills for the past five years. Today, I am here to talk about an event that is very special for me. It's the yearly Teachers Appreciation Day, also called Guru Vandana. An event HSS has been celebrating for over 16 years across the nation. During this event, we as students invite our teachers and pay our respect to them by uniquely celebrating the student-teacher relationship. For me, this has instilled the importance and the role of teachers in our life and appreciate their sacrifice and service to shape the future. The Guru Vandana program provides a platform for students to honor their teachers for imparting knowledge and wisdom to them. Students seek blessings from their teachers and honor them in a true Indian tradition. During this event, each student will honor their respective teachers, followed by cultural performance, fun activities, and food. In Lake County, we have honored more than 100 teachers and principals in the last three years and across six school districts and more than 15 elementary, middle, and high schools. More than 150 Hindu families have attended this celebration. Last year, across the nation, Guru Vandana events were held in 23 states, 71 cities, and 62 districts with more than 7,600 participations. On behalf of the HSS Buffalo Grove chapter, it is my pleasure to invite you and your family to grace the Teachers Appreciation Day celebrations as our guest of honor. The event is scheduled on Sunday, May 7th, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM at Community Arts Center, Buffalo Grove, Illinois. We have already sent that email to you, so please respond to it. Here's a physical copy of the event.
Thank you. Next is John McMurray.
Good evening, good evening. My name is John McMurray. My wife, Jennifer, and I have lived in Vernon Hills and within the Vernon Hills High School boundary since 2005. We have three children that are either currently attending or will attend Vernon Hills High School now through 2030. I wrote to this board last week regarding an issue that we are discussing today and has increased heightened awareness across the district. That is around the graduation ceremony for Vernon Hills High School and the venue, which was also discussed at your finance meeting last week. I would like to thank the board and Board President Lisa Hassel in particular for their swift response to my email, as well as removing the variable of cost of a ceremony or venue change from the equation. In addition, I also appreciate that a meeting will be held this week with some parents, Dr. Herman and Dr. Gilliam, to discuss how we can gather stakeholder voices regarding future graduation events. President Hassel, in her response to me, then goes on to share that several variables will need to be considered as part of the data gathering, including number of tickets available to the event, the driving distance to the venue, venue availability and sustainability, and school traditions. Clearly, there are many factors and variables to consider, no question. But these variables are not all weighted the same. Above all else, the pinnacle of a student's daring experience in high school should be celebrated with their family directly, not sitting in another room watching it on a screen. We do not live near any of our family. As a result, they do not get to spend much time with our sons as they would like. They will all travel from great distances all over the country to Vernon Hills to celebrate this significant educational milestone at great expense to them. For us then to require them in this special moment to sit in an entirely different venue and watch on a screen for the sake of school tradition, perhaps it is time to reevaluate those traditions. Clearly, Libertyville High School had traditions in the graduation ceremonies throughout their rich history, but also decided to transition to a venue that could suitably host their growing enrollment, attendance, and overall demand for family participation. The mission of District 128 is to develop graduates who are daring. As part of that journey, we ask students to be inquisitive. Now it is time for us to role model this expected behavior and question convention and propose a solution that will allow for any family of a graduate of Vernon Hills High School to actively participate in the event in the same venue. It's time to start a new tradition, just as Libertyville High School did. Graduation is for the students, first and foremost, and their families. And it is time the event evolves to support them and the overall growth and evolution of our community. Thank you.
Next is Maria Chavez.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Those were very eloquent speeches, unlike mine. Very simple, from a basic parent. Oh, you can't hear me. Oh, okay. See, I'm not used to this. This is my very first time here, so nice meeting you, meeting the board. Thank you for the opportunity. I will just start very simple. I mean, I have two boys, one already graduated. The other one is a junior. I'm sorry. Not sure I can do this. As a Latino immigrant, different to the previous speech, we do have our families very, very tight and close. They are not extended family. They are immediate family. They're a support system. I have my mom, my dad, my sister. Last year, I had to make decisions. We only had four tickets, so I had to tell my mom and dad, you guys get to choose which of you is going to go. The other one gets to see them on a screen. That is okay if that's the rule. We follow the rules. What was not okay is when we went out and find out that, oh, other high schools get to get other venues and get to have unlimited tickets and be able to have their families there. That was not good. It didn't feel right. So like I said, and this is why I'm so nervous, I don't do these things. I'm a full-time mom, worker, sorry. I work full-time. I travel a lot. Thankfully, I have two great boys that are able to manage through the system without me having to be on their back. But this really got close to me and I said, yes, I'll go and I'll speak up because I have a junior that'll graduate in 2024 and I would love his family to be there. Because tradition, we've been talking about tradition. Tradition shouldn't be about a building. It should be about emotions and feelings and being able to have your family with you, celebrating such a big milestone. The building is where it begun, yeah, but it evolves. We tell our kids to be daring. That means about being evolving, resilient, adapting to the new realities. Part of the new reality is we're growing. This is an amazing community. We've always felt included and part of it since we moved here 13, 14 years ago. I didn't even remember. And that's what's so great about it. And people keep moving here. I don't know if the number of kids is going to increase or not, or it may go up and down. Maybe we can be flexible about it. When it's small enough, we can do it in the gym. It's not about the location. It's about having the ability to celebrate with those that are close to you and that were part of your growth and development. That is what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Next is Gwen Jansen.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the board and to the administrators and really to all the stakeholders here tonight. I know a lot is being discussed at the meetings and within the wider community about issues of equity. There are clearly strong feelings and even a fair amount of frustration. I've heard union representatives express frustration over shape-shifting expectations for scheduling of final exams. Last week, we heard foreign language teachers express frustration over losing an instructional tool that they valued without being offered a workable replacement. I have expressed and heard others express frustration over the sudden loss of the athletic awards at VHHS last year. I've heard frustrations regarding graduation venues, as we've all heard, and equitable access for families. I've heard frustration over inconsistent grading standards and policies. I myself have expressed frustration about the fact that my VHHS students are not being given the same course enrollment opportunities as their grade level peers at LHS. We hear responses like equity doesn't always mean equal or that's a building or teacher preference. But how are preferences being determined? How are we deciding which things needn't be equal to be equitable? What data is driving the decisions being made? If it's not data, then what is it? Are the decisions being made based on opinions, on feelings? Without clearly articulated explanation of what's driving decision-making on issues that I mentioned and similar concerns, is it any wonder that there's frustration from stakeholder groups? From your vantage points in the balcony, I hope that you can direct the creation of a clear, consistent, data-driven, and transparent framework so that our educators feel supported and valued and to ensure our students and families are given equal access to opportunities for success within our schools and beyond. Thank you.
Next is Jason Block.
Hello, everyone. All right. My name is Jason Block. I'm a resident of Mundaline and I have a daughter who's a sophomore at Vernon Hills High School. Thank you so much, board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I just had a few quick thoughts to share with the board regarding the inequity that exists in our district when it comes to graduation. And I swear when I wrote these, I thought they were original and now they they seem a little less than that now, but I'll proceed. All right. As a Vernon Hills High School parent, I would hate to ever see a situation where a student couldn't have their entire family present to see them graduate from high school. And no, watching it from a remote location on a screen somewhere else in the building is not the same thing as seeing them graduate. The main arguments we are hearing for why we can't remove that obstacle for families altogether by joining Libertyville High School at a remote location are the distance we would have to travel and tradition. When it comes to distance, I could safely say that a great majority of the families would willingly drive 30 or 40 minutes for a graduation ceremony that would include having siblings, grandparents, and even an aunt or uncle or two in attendance. In fact, we drive our kids farther than that for the random travel baseball games every other weekend when they're 12. I think we can manage the time in the car once every few years for the payoff of allowing more loved ones to be able to share our graduates' big day. And that is where tradition comes in. We have heard it said that it is a tradition that Vernon Hills graduates in the gym and that some people love this tradition. You know what a greater, longer-standing tradition than that is? Having family there for milestone events in our lives. Tradition is not about physical structures like a gym, a football field, or an arena. It's about the people who are there. So let's do everything we can to make sure they can be there. And let's not forget that there are, that their traditions can just be a lazy cover for bad decision-making. I always say that the absolute worst reason for doing something is because we've always done it that way. We need to look at each decision on its own merits, not on how it's been done for however long it's been done. That is irrelevant to making the decision that is best for our students and their families. And one last thought about tradition. It seems that there are times when decision-makers like to lean on tradition when it is convenient and it suits their preferences and desires. Traditions matter when they want to keep graduation in our gym, but it doesn't matter as much when it comes to, for example, giving our student athletes varsity letters. A tradition VHHS administration decided to get rid of recently. There were no community surveys done, no public meetings held. They just decided to do away with that tradition for their own reasons, despite Libertyville continuing it to this day. Sure, it's a really small tradition, but don't, we can't say that traditions are all important when one was so quickly discarded. This is not to say that graduating at an off-campus location is a perfect solution. I know it's not. There are definitely some drawbacks to it. I just think that there's a reason Libertyville graduates at Now Arena because they know that family trumps all, even convenience and tradition.
Robin Cleek.
Good evening, Robin Cleek. I have a senior and a sophomore at the high school and a seventh grader who will be here in a couple of years. And my disclaimer that I have to state, sorry, is that I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a parent tonight and not on behalf of the Board of 73. Okay, that's out of the way. Most people already took what I was going to say, so I'm going to be really brief and say that I'm and say that I'm also here to speak about the graduation venue. I echo what people have said before me. But two things I wanted to touch on were, one, I can't speak for everybody else, but I was not looking, despite the fact that I do have a current senior, I was not looking for the venue to be changed for this year. I do understand how these decisions work. I understand how budgets work and how that process aligns. And I know that this year is most likely a done deal barring some miracle. So that would just be moving forward. And then the other thing I wanted to touch on is, I of course understand that decisions that you guys make rarely, if ever, please, everybody. So I just wanted to note that the lack of dissenting voices on this issue in the community was sort of very noticeable to me. Not only did we have no trouble garnering a lot of signatures on the petition that West Poland will present in a little bit, but that was quickly done in six days with nothing more than a social media outreach. But the threads that occurred on social media did not have their usual back and forth of like 8,000 different opinions and perspectives and arguments and all that. And I do think that's worth noting. Simply because we can never get all stakeholders to offer their input, but certainly people either probably are quiet because maybe they don't have a dog in the hunt anymore. But certainly nobody seems to think that this is something that is just horrible to change. So or whatever that's worth. And like I said, I don't want to be redundant, so I will end there. But thank you so much for your time and thank you so much for your service to the community.
Next is Michael Schenk.
Good evening, everyone. I was actually not planning to speak tonight, but I wrote my name just in case. But I decided I think I will. There's one word that kind of is the common thread here and it's family. And it's how we support our families. It takes a lot to raise a child, as we all know, most of us I'm sure know. And we can't do it alone. We do with our family. We do with our friends. And one reason, my wife, we've lived here 20 years now. We have three kids. Recently, some events happened that really made me appreciate family and friends and the support that they can give when times are tough and times in celebration. And to only potentially give four tickets to, four tickets to see your student graduate, that hurts the family. Because there's many people in this room that have more than four tickets that helped them raise their child. I truly think that's the word that should motivate your decisions. Mr. McMurray talked about variables that need to be overcome. There's no doubt about it. But I implore you to use family to motivate yourself to find every way through those variables to hopefully solve. I wouldn't call it a disagreement, but to solve, to come up with a solution. And I know there's a lot of smart people in this room that can find that solution. And like Ms. Cleek said, 2023, 2024 may could be a possibility. And I'm always there, willing to donate my time and services to help be part of any kind of committee to help explore that too. So thank you. Have a good night.
Next is Colleen Jasper.
Hi. Hi, I'm Colleen Jasper. I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. And this is not my first board meeting, surprisingly. I came here at the board meeting before spring, I mean, winter break. And there was two things that got brought up before I left because I had to go. And one of them was the mental health action plan. And I don't know what you guys were talking about, but it just seemed like you weren't really making any differences in what you're doing as far as mental health, because anytime you go to the L S T at Vernon Hills High School, at least, there's never a social worker down there. And if they are, they're in a meeting or they're busy or they're just never available. And you're talking about making a new plan and didn't talk about literally just not scheduling all the social workers in one meeting, like all the time. I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
So that is the end of the sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? I think we have two people. Wes, do you want to go next or you want to? And Wes, you can give the petition to Mary Toderick, who's sitting at the end. She's our Director of Communications.
Hi, Wes Poland spoke last week, so I'm not going to take any more time. I just wanted to present the board with a petition that Robin and I started on Tuesday and we only shared it via social media. And since then, we were able to get 509 signatures and that's from 444 households. So thank you for your time and consideration.
My name's John Hetzel. I live here in Vernon Hills. I have a daughter that's a freshman here. I also have a daughter that'll be a freshman in two years. I'm no relationship to the board president. Let's know that. I'm here to address a couple of things. Last board meeting, Mr. Vila addressed putting panic buttons in the bathrooms after a very terrible incident took place in the bathroom. And there's been several incidences like that in this school. So the safe haven that this school is for children seems to be getting a little bit out of control at times. I've seen several videos that I'm sure the administrators have about fights taking place in the school. I think panic buttons are a good idea in the bathrooms and maybe in some other places like the foyer. The third day of school here, my daughter is a freshman sitting at a table. And another girl came up to a girl at the other table and threatened her and said she wanted to fight her. The girl said, I'm in sports. I don't even know what you're doing. The girl turned around, took off her hoop earrings, her eyelashes and her shoes, put her hair in a ponytail and started throwing haymakers. Now, I've seen plenty of videos. The one in the bathroom was terrible. I think we need to address what might be causing some of this because there's been a lot of fights and I know that there's been several kids expelled as well. So why is this happening? Well, myself and several other parents think that there's a bigger problem going on. You're overwhelming the kids right now with the social ideology. We even heard it from this hassle today. The word inclusion, cultural appropriation. All of these things seem to be permeating the daily grind. You even see it in the newsletters. It's everywhere. But here's the problem. These kids are smart. They've grown up in multi-ethnic, multicultural, multi-racial society since they were zero to 14, 18 years old now. When I look at the board, I don't see that diversity as much. But I do know that the kids are very diverse and they know we not giving them credit or the school and the administrators are not giving them credit for knowing that who's gay, who's black or whatever. They all know and they're all their friends. That, you know, we had the turnabout dance, which probably the most inclusive word you can use, but that dance was changed to winner dance. But we had 17 kids at our house. My daughters grew up in an environment not from here and they were definitely the minority where they were at. And, you know, they never understood racism and some of the things that are going on at this level that's been, you know, overwhelming them every day. So what's happening is we feel that there, that there's, you know, there's fostering resentment, divisiveness and entitlement now among the kids, which is creating some of these problems that you're seeing. And I think that that needs to just be pulled back a little bit. Allow the kids to be kids. They're smarter than you think. They've grown up in this society. I mean, heck, look at the student council, very diverse. Look at the students in this room, very diverse. But now you've got teachers and the administrators and the board overwhelming the kids with this stuff and they're saying, what the heck? Anyway, that's my point that I wanted to make tonight. Just try to pull back a little bit. It's all very important, but don't overwhelm the kids. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else wishing to address the board for public comment this evening? Now is your chance.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. Socrates Vella. I'm very impressed that this topic of expanding graduation has drawn so many parents. And you have parents basically getting the same message. I'm pretty sure right now, if you had a magic wand, you'd probably wave it and make it happen. Probably one of the biggest obstacles that's going to prevent you, Board, from making all these people happy is probably money. So good luck. Finding the money for this type of venue. I'm pretty sure it's going to be very expensive. I'd like to say thank you to the principals, especially Dr. Gilliam. I don't know if I'm pronouncing your name correctly, but I think, you know, a lot of people don't realize that there's only so much they can do. And I think while he is the face, you know, for Vernon Hills High School, Galentis, correct? I can't speak for you since you're in another building, but I think the principals try to do their best to try to smooth out all the edges and I always remind Dr. Gilliam to stay in his lane. And I've noticed a lot of these educators, administrators, they just don't seem to know when to stay in their lane. They, I think they're just problem solvers and they just want to fix everything. So I just wanted to make sure that people recognize that these principals, a lot of times their hands are tied behind their backs, but they're doing their best. So I just want to say thank you because there's been some good things that have happened here, right? So good luck. Back to the panic button. As Hetzel brought it up, two years ago, you know, I challenged Dr. Herman, Dr. Gilliam on this. Sadly, that incident happened. I don't know, a couple of months ago. That's the first thing that came to mind. This kid probably would have been able to rush to that button. Logistically, I don't know how you're going to make it happen, but I really appreciate it. I hope that you guys are, those wheels are churning in your heads and see if you can make something like that happen. So on that note, I have nothing else, but thank you for your time.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda for communication. And that is our Student School Board Representative Reports. If you have not heard, our six outstanding Student School Board Representatives. You do not want to miss this excellent part of our meeting. It is one of the things that we look forward to and it keeps us focused on student voice. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our outstanding Student School Board Representatives.
Hi, I'm Fatima Manshawi and I'm an L H S student rep and I'll start off the reports tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. So with spring break only four days away, Wildcats are excited for some well-deserved rest and some sun, but that hasn't stopped us from being busy. Last week, we had our annual activities fair and Sarah and I, and Sarah's not here tonight, she has a lacrosse game, but we were invited to speak to the incoming freshmen about involvement and some of the L H S core values like green dot. The main gym was full of tables with various clubs and sports ready to recruit eighth graders to join. I personally ran the interact club, like the volunteering club table, and we got so many signed ups. It was definitely a full circle moment being there with the eighth graders and I was there at one point too. So it was cool. Last week was also Healthy Relationships Week and students learned to celebrate, like the students learned about relationships and celebrated with a fun spirit week, including me Monday, relationship with ourselves and self-care, tech-free Tuesday, and they dropped off their phones at a resource center and they got a donut, which was fun. And the rest of the week was Wildcat Wednesday, which included a fun treasure hunt, Earth Thursday and Friend Friday, which we celebrated by wearing green, which was also St. Patrick's Day. And student council, we're currently planning prom and we kicked it off by visiting Stonegate Venue in Hoffman Estates to taste some samples and plan out the dance. We're all really excited for this year's theme and it's old Hollywood, so we're getting pumped. We're getting excited. Boards are kicking off strong with lacrosse having their first game on Friday and volleyball having their first game right now. And water polo is also doing amazing. I'm sure our student athletes are going to celebrate a ton of wins this season. And to continue our mission of inclusion, L H S is celebrating March by spreading by spreading the word inclusion because it's like month of inclusion and the club best buddies hosted a prom with Vernon Hills this fast Saturday. And the buddies, but the buddies enjoyed a fun night of dancing. Muslim Student Association is planning events for Ramadan, the holy month in the Islamic calendar in which Muslims fast from sunrise to sunset. This year, we began fasting on Thursday and throughout the month, we're hoping to educate staff and students about Ramadan and open up like the door for conversations about its meaning for us. And that's kind of why I pass these little goodie bags for you guys, but yeah.
Thank you.
And as AP classes are starting to wrap up curriculums and reviewing for AP tests, senior Neha Saghar says, I'm grateful for having good subs. Shout out to Mr. Goodwin. So Neha and I are in AP Calc A B together and our teacher's been out for a while to do like a family emergency and we definitely miss her, but L H S has done a wonderful job with like helping our class stay on track and like finding us a sub just to keep up with the other classes. So it's been really good. We're really glad. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jasmine and I'm the other L H S student board rep here tonight. The main issue that I really wanted to address tonight is communication to the students. In the last couple of months, there have been a lot of changes being made to the schedule for the semester, but none of them have been really communicated directly to students instead to teachers, administrators and occasionally parents. With the calendar, the end date to seniors is honestly still nebulous in our minds despite the fact that the board seemingly finalized that we would end school on May 19th. It seemed like it was at least last month, but I've heard reports that it was before then. I'm not entirely sure. But many kids that I've talked to still aren't sure about May 19th and they, or they've discounted it as just a rumor. Every time I've brought up our last day of school as May 19th, the friends, it's been met with confusion or at best the statement, oh, I think I heard about that. The final schedule has honestly been even more stressful and since it arguably affects us more and impacts the entire student body. Along with the rest of the student body, I'm incredibly happy that the board has come to a decision about our final schedule. However, no official email has been sent to students. No official email has been sent to students containing the schedule or even stating that there is a schedule. I know teachers received an email about it the week that the schedule was finalized and parents also recently got an email. But students have yet to receive any communication from administration or the board about what the last couple of days of the semester will look like. Thankfully, our teachers and parents have shared that information from us, but it's still really tough to not have that communication directly from administration or the board. I simply did want to bring this issue to the board and hopefully that will lead to better communication in the future. I know there will be more meetings to determine next year's schedule and I'm really looking forward to seeing how the board and administration will shift their communication methods to remove stress from students. Switching over to a lighter subject, or not so light for some of us, college decisions for the regular decision round have, are starting to come in. It's been definitely stressful for seniors, but really exciting as we start to plan out the next four years of our lives. I've had my fair share of ups and downs through this process from being rejected and waitlisted and accepted to some schools. The acceptances are nice and it's definitely really great to know that the end is in sight and by early April, we'll have all of our decisions back. And then less than a month after that, we'll be committed to whichever college we want to go to. This past weekend as well, two L H S clubs competed in their state tournaments. Mock Trial went down to the University of Illinois at Springfield. Unfortunately, they didn't place in the top eight, but made a strong showing and had a great season, according to Mock Trial sponsor, Mr. Dennis Duffy. Varsity Debate also went to state where juniors Alex Clark and Mia Khan placed as quarterfinalists for public forum debate, meaning that they were in the top eight of all debaters in Illinois. As a member of the debate team, it was really great to see our team make such a strong showing. I unfortunately couldn't be there, but I'm really proud of all of them and I'm proud of all the teams that competed. But thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Marie. This month is Women's History Month, marking an important time for the Dare to Empower Club to celebrate historically important but undermined female identifying figures, to discuss hard topics and to educate the school on the stereotypes and identities around women at the school. D T E Dare to Empower hosted a school-wide trivia and brought in inspiring and impactful leaders like Dr. Eb and Dr. Sanchez, which I want to personally thank for coming in to speak. For the past few weeks, D T E members have researched on topics relating to gender disparities, health inequities and the increasing pressure of social media and the body image expectations. However, I was a bit unsettled by some of the research. However, I was a bit unsettled by some of the research specifically about the low prevalence of women in STEM. What was becoming clear to me was that a lot of the national data regarding the lack of female presence in STEM fields and even high school classes didn't seem far off from what I and some of my peers see at the school. In high-level STEM classes, Calculus III, Physics C, Physics AB, for example, there are a concerning and disproportionately low number of females. Amy Rupsis, a current senior who's been in several of these male-dominated classes, says the gender dynamic has made her quote realized the disparities among her classes. In classes where she's one of the only females, Rupsis has experienced imposter syndrome and feelings of inferiority even being a hardworking and passionate student. At times, Rupsis would feel quote embarrassed and nervous to speak up in classes, which not only would affect her work ethic, but also her confidence. A lot of the time, she observed that the men in her class would be quote the first to answer questions and receive the attention. However, over time, she learned that the gender dynamic shouldn't should not dictate her educational experience. In fact, one of the most striking things she said was about how it forced her to emerge as a more empowered, outgoing, and reflective individual. Quote, "I realized that instead of letting the unequal gender dynamics suppress my work ethic and hard work, that it would actually increase my ability to persevere through my work." Rupsis acquired perseverance, but not every girl at this school does when having to face these circumstances. It is unsettling to me that students like Rupsis are having to tackle these battles to begin with. It's unsettling to me that there aren't that many females enrolling in these classes and that the few women who are having to navigate a rigorous course curriculum while at the same time feeling like an imposter. Perhaps it's because historically STEM has been a male-dominated field and it's been molded by a lot of male figures. Perhaps it's because girls at our school haven't had female role models to tell them they could do anything they wanted from an early age. Perhaps it's because of the gender gap that already exists and it acts as a further deterrent and invisible barrier. Regardless, it's this is not how it has to be in the future. In fact, I think there are several things we can do now to inspire more young females to enroll in more male-dominated classes like weightlifting and autos. Rupsis's hope is that younger girls entering high school will quote seriously consider taking high-level courses, regardless of the demographics and dynamics present within the system today and that the current dynamic that exists changes. Rupsis is unsettled by the fact that we have an environment in which males are dominating a lot of high-level courses because it's fostering a society in which she thinks quote, "Men are more likely to become leaders and people of power throughout the workforce." I think it is essential and even necessary for the school to host more workshops that will, one, encourage women to take more STEM classes at our high school and, two, allow female identifying students to challenge the idea that male-dominated dominated classes have to be that way in the future. This month has offered a lot of students have has offered a lot of students excitement, stress, and suspense. Firstly, CrossFit just recently wrapped up their three-week-long CrossFit Open Global Competition. Shriya Mohan was one of just six students who participated in the challenging but unique workouts. Overall, she said the experience was really enjoyable getting to work out with everyone else because quote, "We were all supporting each other." Secondly, already seniors are amidst intense discussions about prom groups, dates, after-parties, and prom dresses. I can feel the stress of some people trying to figure out what group they're going with, who's invited where, and prom dress shopping excursions. I would have thought buying a prom dress now would be really early, but I guess students have been starting to buy their prom dresses as early as August. Senior Grace Kapke says that despite the process being a bit stressful, there still is a lot of excitement. The sports world at VHS is a thriving and bustling world. Track and field came home as indoor champions of the CSL decorated with many first-place wins and medals. Being there myself and being part of the victory felt good after months of hard work. Spring season is now in full swing. Girl soccer just started, but Corey Smith, a first-year varsity head soccer coach, has big plans for his soccer team. After having just one game, he says he's excited to watch all the different personalities of the team come together to create chemistry and to see their soccer identity forming as both free-spirited, serious, intense, competitive, and a tight-knit community team. Spring break is right at our fingertips, less than a week away. Yet four more days of tests and quizzes and sports competitions feel like a lot. Sophomore Anya Gupta says she's thrilled to finally have a break away from the stress of homework in school. Others like Jay O'Connor are excited to be traveling, exploring Barcelona, and most importantly, escaping the cold rain and snow of Illinois. After months of hard work in their classes, clubs, sports, fine art commitments, students deserve this break. I also want to make a note that over the past few days, ever since my article on affirmative action, when it comes to the college admissions admissions process came out, there has there's been a lot of conversation around the controversial topic. My intention with it was to shed light on my views and the views of people who disagree with me. It spurred a lot of emotions, both positive and negative. However, I think it's revealing the underlying divide that already existed on this issue. There's groups of students who think it's unfair when it comes to the college admissions process and that students should be evaluated on pure merit. Another group of students think that it's an an important step to equity and that it's a way to address the resource and funding gaps that minority communities may have in comparison to white communities. But still, I'm seeing a very clear line of disagreement forming and it's leaving me a bit unsettled. Firstly, I think students need to be further educated on this issue. My article brought in a combination of different perspectives, those that aligned with mine and didn't. There's a concerning amount of people that have negatively responded to the article and I think in part, that's a reflection of how sensitive any topic can be when it focuses so heavily on race. But I think it should be a wake-up call as well. It's not a good thing that people are so divided on this issue, one in which is so racially focused. It's a bit discouraging to see that division. I think the school should consider developing workshops or making it a point to educate students on affirmative action, despite how complex and nuanced the concept is. I still have friends who come from a minority background to feel completely invalidated when they get comments like "You only got into this school because you're black or because you're Mexican." It has made my own friends hesitant about sharing their college decisions. My article was my way of knocking down a door that hasn't yet been knocked been knocked on, but it can't end there. There has to be something, an educational workshop, a curriculum which teaches students and staff about affirmative action so that we can address a very important issue. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ariel Schifrin. Um, last Friday, Cougars shared in the school administration's appreciation for staff. Uh, in an annual March Madness tradition returned from before the pandemic, staff was provided with a taco meal that Miss Young described as a great facilitator of camaraderie and positive school culture. This day-long event held in the foyer served as a great reminder for students to express their thanks to staff members. Also on Friday, Cougars received a survey to collect their opinions on school discipline policies. With a focus on detentions and suspensions, students recounted their experiences and perceptions of policy efficacy. This data brings two conclusions, the former addressing the actual function of discipline and the latter addressing its perception among students. Though a vast majority of district records have the cause for discipline left blank, the student survey and second greatest cause in district records show attendance as the greatest impetus for detentions. So that the majority of student criticism having addressed the discipline received for lateness is unsurprising. More telling, however, is the effect that student reports uh students report discipline having on them. On a scale of one to 10, students having received discipline on average reported a six for their likelihood to repeat offending action. Sixty-eight percent of the school as a whole does not believe that detentions or suspensions change behavior.
I'm sorry, Eric, could you repeat what this survey is, how this was?
So this was a survey sent out to all Vernon Hills students where they were able to voluntarily share opinions on school discipline and policy. Um, there were questions asked to them where they agreed with a number of statements regarding the efficacy of the policy.
And when was this survey done?
Friday. Through the weekend.
And what was the percentage of students that responded of the total student body?
Um, we collected a hundred eighty-eight responses, which is just over 10% of student bodies.
So who sent out the survey?
Uh, Dr. Gilliam sent it out and it was created by myself.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so we had a number of questions that were available only to people who had reported getting a suspension or detention and other questions that were available generally to people who had not been experiencing those. So I can break down the data for both those who have been through a detention or suspension and those who have not been through a detention or suspension. Um, but generally, again, those who had received it reported a six for their likelihood to repeat the offending action. Where sixty-eight percent of the school as a whole does not believe that detentions or suspensions change behavior. Obviously, this is a student opinion, so it's led by bias. Um, I spoke to Mr. Cortez, who's a dean at the school. He uh gave me some insight as to how student sentiments relate to being the recipient of a detention or suspension. So obviously, um, there's some bias there and I'll address how teachers feel as well. Uh, but these results did raise questions regarding the purpose of school policies. And Mr. Cortez explained that detentions are meant to be a deterrent for bad behavior and accountability system and space to do work more quietly. Uh, interviews with or uh, when I talked to teachers, they told me that at times um, detentions have been a very functional method to address behavior when the primary interventions don't work and have been a tool to rectify challenges in their classroom. Both teachers and Mr. Cortez agree that detentions alone are frequently not a working solution without being coupled with intervention by a social worker or other LSD staff person and render a number of detentions less than effective for certain situations without that kind of intervention. Though only thirty-four percent of disciplined students say that their dean worked to make a plan to remedy their situation, Mr. Cortez's the bulk of detention, dealing with attendance, don't require long-term planning to be made. Challenging the successes that teachers have reported within the system is friction in the disciplinary response to an incident. Difficulty in rendering a disciplinary measure to an incident in a timely manner has caused certain classroom occurrences to not receive a response that is effective or relevant to the student at the time. Also, students report occasional disruptive environments in the in-school detention room or disconnect from their work that makes their experience feel, as one student put it, quote, "More punitive than restorative." As a nineteen sixty-one study found, only ten percent of students consider the possibility of detentions as an important factor in limiting their tardiness. So perhaps exploring alternatives for the attendance detentions issued could be valuable. Uh, focusing on the perception of the school discipline policy, student confidence leaves some to be desired. Fifty-one percent of total student respondents agree that Vernon Hills High School has a good system for student discipline, a figure that drops to thirty-seven percent for discipline recipients. A large part of this issue is based in a disconnect of understanding between students and the LST. Though Mr. Cortez explains the LST system is automated to not issue detentions for first-time attendance offenders, um, or not offenders, offenses rather, some students believe that their detentions were received after a single violation. So clearly, the perception issue stems, at least in some part, from just a lack of understanding of how the policies are enacted. More often, however, students feel as their detentions are ineffective or don't adequately address concerns of interpersonal disrespect. Overall, though, the disciplinary system in place offers a means for teachers and LSTs to address concerns at school with some success, although student confidence in its efficacy is not high. I'd also like to thank uh Dr. Ellis Bowen for providing me with district data and Mr. Cortez for his time and extend my appreciation to both of them for their contribution to my report. And finally, I'd like to share the widespread student appreciation for culturally conscious education. Creating avenues for students to learn about perspectives that historically have been less visible is essentially is essential to modern education and a well-exercised empathetic response. Efforts made and continued are felt and wanted. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hari Jan and I am a Vernon Hills student representative. The month of March has been a lucky one for the Cougars. On March fourth, choir had solo and ensemble and all students were in an ensemble performance. Each ensemble group was led by one student, typically upperclassmen, and it was student-taught since January. As a member of the choir, the day of the performance was very fulfilling because I was able to see all the hard work that went into learning the songs and performing them for a judge to pay off. For students that were in concert choir honors, they performed a solo song as well. March sixth marked marked the start of World Languages Week and appropriately, on March ninth, all students were able to visit and learn from the passion projects by students in AP World Languages. Junior Maddie Wayne in AP Spanish noted how she really enjoyed being able to choose a topic to research and granted the freedom to explore whatever she wanted, since that opportunity wasn't granted often. She also added how she had more enthusiasm slash motivation for this project than she usually did for others because she was genuinely interested in what she was researching and didn't feel constrained by any guidelines. A common opinion of many students who were interviewed was that they want more open-ended projects in the future to spark motivation and genuine curiosity. On March sixth, uh, ELS was able to share their talents through two performances in the auditorium. Mr. Little, who is an instructor in the program, explained how this performance provided students with special needs the same opportunities that neurotypical students have to prepare, rehearse, anticipate, and experience the rush of performing a show. This this performance warmed the hearts of many that watched and gave students the special the students with special needs the opportunity to shine on stage. On March fourteenth, students celebrated Pi Day through activities in the foyer during lunch periods, having the opportunity to vote for a math teacher to be pied by our very own Dr. G. Since this Pi Day was the first that seniors experienced, there was a lot of excitement and curiosity regarding the activities in the in the foyer and of course, about who was getting pied. Among math classes, there were celebrations that consisted of snacks that students brought and of course, pie, which was certainly devoured. This day created a sense of new excitement and community in Vernon Hills. On Friday, March seventeenth, Vernon Hills acapella, love notes, and voicemail went on a field trip to elementary schools in the district. Sharing music in a little high school spirit along with wisdom, students were able to spark curiosity in mu- music education and music classes offered at Vernon Hills in elementary schoolers. Best Buddies was able to get their groove on on Saturday, March eighteenth. Their prom theme was Through the Decades and students showed up in very fun outfits. Senior Leah Alterson, who has been a part of Best Buddies since freshman year, said that it was so great to see everyone everything that had been in the works since the beginning of second semester come to life. Since students from other schools were invited as well, including Libertyville High School, Alterson noted how it was important to take into account what they would also like to experience from prom. Everyone had a great time and the presence of the balloon artist was very much appreciated among the students. As Cougars continue their hard work in the second semester, a sweet springing break is just around the corner, exciting many. Thank you.
Thank you to our student school board representatives. Moving on, uh, we have a foyer request.
Yes, we received one foyer request on February sixteenth and it was from a parent requesting email correspondence between staff members regarding her student as well as video footage from January twelfth during fifth and eighth periods. We fulfilled this request on March second and it took eight hours to complete.
Thank you for your work on that. Um, we also have a donation to acknowledge. Um, I'm sorry, we have three donations that we'll be acknowledging this evening. Dan, did you wanna do that or was there anything you wanted to mention? So um, we note that uh and thank Bridget Catalano for donating a Harris Seed Grow Light Plant Stand. We also acknowledge Jave George of Greenhouse Megastore, who donated a pack of square garden trays, a pack of germination tray with drainage holes, two thermostats for seeding mats and four seedling propagation mats. And finally, we'd like to acknowledge Joan Nagayan for donating a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-gallon IBC tote. Thank you very much for your contributions. Um, turn it over back to Dr. Herman for good news.
Yes, again, to build on all the good news that students already shared, um, LHS Science Olympia team had a strong finish to its season at the March fourth CLC Regional. The team brought home five second place, two third place, and one fourth place medals. The team is coached by Paul Carnstead and Kim Holder. The Vernon Hills Science Olympia team won this month's McHenry County Regional. Over forty students competed in twenty-three different science and engineering events. The team brought home ten first place, nine second place, and three third place honors. The team now advances to the April twenty-second competition at the University of Illinois. The team is coached by head coach Nicole Collins and assistant coach Yan Choi. Next, LHS Decathlon team finished tenth in state, held on March fourth at Northeastern University. The competition was held in person in person for the first time since two thousand nineteen. The team is coached by science teacher Mark Busing. A group of Vernon Hills students was nominated to attend a field trip at College of Lake County to tour their Baxter Innovation Space and learn about two and four-year programs at the university center. Additionally, students were given tips to prepare for interviews. The students will benefit from the Mother's Trust Foundation, which allows students to select dresses and suits for prom, graduation, and job interviews. It's a great example of resources coming to gather for the benefits of our students. The students were accompanied by staff member Alyssa Gong, Laura Rash, and Natasha Rosneck. The Libertyville DECA team competed at its state competition this month in Rosemont. The team's honors included two national qualifiers, a second place overall by Adam Buwer with innovation plan, and a fourth place finish overall by Oliver Braun and Thomas Ganella in financials. They will compete in the Nationals in Orlando next month. They will compete in the Nationals in Orlando next month. The team is coached by Luca Seal, Seal. Thank you, Chicolini. And the last good news is that the Libertyville Debate Team, as you said, had historic weekend, and they, at the Varsity Debate Team in Illinois State, the team brought four public forum teams to the tournament with a duo of Alex Clark and Mia Khan advancing to the quarterfinals, a feat that LHS has not achieved in fourteen years. Though they lost that round, they finished as one of the top eight public forum teams in Illinois. The team is coached by Alex, Alexandra. Sorry, my tongue tied today, Gabber Lolick and Sarah Greens, Greenswag. And that is the end of good news.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our consent vote agenda, again, these are items that were already discussed in committee. They're routine items like approving previous meeting minutes, the employment of employees that was discussed last month, uh, two weeks, sorry, last week in committee, educational tours that we've discussed, the AP Bill's payable report, disposable, disposal of equipment. And I would like to ask now for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as presented.
Carmichael, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to items for action. The first on the list tonight is the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four IHSA membership renewal.
This is our annual membership renewal for both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School to participate in Illinois High School athletics and activity events. And it's something that the board needs to renew each year.
Right, and we know that there is no fee to renew this membership, and in order for our teams to compete in IHSA events, we have to be members. So may I have a motion?
Drumkey, motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four IHSA membership renewals for LHS and Vernon Hills High School.
Benjamin, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. It occurs to me that I neglected to turn these items over to the committee chairpersons.
You're on a roll.
These action items originated, so. We're all willing to share. Thank you.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
To our P and P Chair, Jim Batson, to take us through items B through E.
Thank you. Yeah, you were just on a roll. I didn't want to interrupt.
Make enough time.
I was going with her.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, the next item is the agreement for the Ombudsman Alternative Education Services. Again, like IHSA and many of these others, it happens every year this time of year, and so we need a, a motion to approve this agreement.
Drumkey, motion to approve the Ombudsman Alternative Education Service Arrangement for fourteen thousand five hundred for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yeah, just a reminder, this was discussed at some length in committee, so if we can have a roll call, please, Carol.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the annual certified staffing report. Again, this happens each year about this time. Brian, do you want to give a brief background?
Yes, so last week in a program and personnel committee meeting, we discussed this in detail, our staff report, but I want to give a brief overview of our staffing. So again, each year, each school year in the fall into December, we finish up our curriculum guide and what courses we're going to offer for the next year. And then in January, we start our course selection for our ninth through, current ninth through eleventh grader. We also have our eighth grade orientation in each building, and then our eighth graders also select their courses. Once course selections are done, and again, they're working with our counselors, so we even have counselors that go meet with our eighth graders, feeder district families. We then compile all that data of courses they choose. And then we start this, we start the process of determining how many sections that we have of each course. So when students sign up, for example, they sign up for geometry, and we have a hundred plus students sign up for geometry. We take into account our optimum class sizes, which was negotiated with our teachers union, and this year we had new optimum class sizes for next school year. So with our contract last year, we decided on new optimums, those go into effect for next year. So we take those optimums, and like my example for geometry, you then determine how many sections that you have at each school. It is a lengthy process because you have, we have a lot of courses that we, the students can choose from, from our many different great programs that we offer. Obviously, they have some requirements for graduation that they need to take, but then we want to offer as many electives as possible. So again, we looked at, when we look at the optimums, we determine how many courses, how many sections we're going to offer. At the same time, we're also looking at whether or not we have enough students to offer, you know, certain courses. So there are times that some of our electives, unfortunately, we don't have the number of students to be able to offer the course. So we, you know, do what we can to try to offer as many courses as possible. Once that is completed, really, in the schools, again, the administration in the schools, so the assistant principals, the principal, they're working with the department chairs. They're going through all of that. We meet as a group, and as a district, we go through all of those same section numbers. We, you know, have a lot of eyes on it at that point. Again, we're taking into account the students selecting what courses they choose, the optimums, and so we want to adhere to the optimums, and then we determine what, how many sections that we're going to offer. From the number of sections, then again, the department chairs are working with the assistant principals, the principals on staffing and the teachers that will be staffing those classes and teachers, what's called FTE, so full-time equivalent. So again, teachers teach five classes, a typically five classes a semester. And so that's one point oh. So if they taught only five classes one semester, not the second semester, it's point five. So if you think of ten classes, that's how you get the breakdown of one point oh FTE. And so you could have some full-time, you know, is a lot of full-time teachers, but then you do have some part-time. So when we finish with our staffing, and I've given overview, there's a three-page document, hopefully, other people besides the board has taken a look at. We've broken it down into different categories. We have our full-time equivalent for classroom teachers. We have classroom teachers in Intervention and Services. So our EL, Emergent Language, Special Services, and PAWS, English Learners. And so we have the Classroom FTE for those sections. We also have non-classroom FTE. Our non-classroom FTE include social workers, psychologists, our guy, our school counselors in the LSTs. We also have some teachers that have some non-instructional assignments from data coaches, that equity coaches in the building. And so those are all, what we lumped in as non-classroom FTE. So course selection by students may not affect that FTE, but you could have enrollment affecting that FTE with psychologists or social workers. But, you know, we're trying to get a big picture of kind of what course selection does, what enrollment does, and when really look at, if you look at Libertyville High School with our enrollment gone down by forty-seven students, the number of courses decreased by four hundred and forty classes. Vernon Hills, an enrollment difference of nine, down nine and down twenty-two courses. There are increases in both our English learners and our Special Education Services. When we looked at our staffing, our total FTE in the classroom was down point nine, so nine tenths of a teacher, nine sections. And then in English learner, PAWS, Special Services, we went up point two. And then in our non-classroom FTE, some of the changes, there is an increase in some psychologists in our Special Services. We also increased social worker in Vernon Hill by point four, so we'll have more social work available for our students. And so that non-classroom FTE went up by one point five. And so across the board, across the district, you're looking at a point eight FTE increase for our certified staffing positions.
Thank you.
Do you overview of the staff?
Yeah, there's so much work that goes into that and so many numbers. It's, we're very grateful for all the effort that goes into that. Can we start with a motion in a second to accept this report?
I move to, Hessel, I move to approve the annual certified staffing report as presented.
Rooney, second.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
I would just add, in addition to the staffing memo that is part of the board packet in Board Docs that explains all the data that Mr. Kelly presented, there is also an overview of the annual cycle that I think is very helpful, certainly for me as a non educator to be reminded of. This process really starts back in November, when we approve the curriculum proposals. So this is a, a great overview of how we get to this point when we have the report.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Sorry. Rooney.
Hi.
Missed you. Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda, item D is the annual certified staff employment recommendations.
When we finish with, you know, we finish with staffing, sectioning and staffing, but there are also employment decisions. So there's people be, that are our teachers, are, that are part of the staff report, and we have to make decisions on our, our teachers. And if you look, going back to our staffing report, you'll see that, again, the overall change of our teachers was point eight. We do have retirements this year, and so there are teaching openings that are, you know, we will be posting in various subjects. But we still have to make staffing decisions on individuals. And so by law, you know, we need to make decisions on our first, second, third, and fourth year non-tenure teachers. And so there's recommendations to continue to employ the first-year teachers, second and third, and also the fourth year, and recommend tenure for them. The other piece of employment that you have to look at by law is for our non-tenure part-time faculty. So by law, all non, all part-time faculty have to be released. Some of them will have opportunities to look at some jobs depending on, again, where those openings are in their department. But by law, you have to release them every year. This year doesn't count or any of their tenure, so you have to be full-time to counter tenure. But we've had individual conversations with them, but you will have to, you know, vote on this, and then they get official documentation. So that's the part-time. There's also honorable dismissal of full-time faculty. And this year, there were two full-time faculty. They were covering a year-long leave of absence. By law, again, we need to, they, they know they were covering a year-long leave of absence, but we do need to honorably dismiss them, and they'll, again, they've had individual conversations coming into this year, coming up to this point, and then they'll get official documentation. So that's recommendation to accept these employment recommendations.
Okay, can we have a motion for this recommendation?
Drumkey, motion to approve the annual certified staff employment recommendations as presented.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any comments or questions on the board? Congratulations to the tenured faculty that received tenure this year. That's, that's good news. Can we have a roll call, please?
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. And lastly, on the program and personnel is item E, and this is a, a few employment of employees that have arrived since our committee meeting.
Yeah, although we had a committee meeting last week, we're always hiring and, and, and moving. So we are, I, I want to point out a couple of things on this one I really want to highlight. So you could see that we are making a recommendation to hire, I think, two important people. The first one, hold on to the report up here. So our first one is for a CTE department chair to replace Deb Pelham at Libertyville High School, who is retiring at the end of this year, and so we are recommending Eric Lasky. Eric comes from Ridgewood with a lot of experience in CTE, and he's overseeing CTE, he's kind of an assistant principal, but his background, I think he will bring great leadership to that position. I know that, you know, Tom and his team are happy to have Eric join us. That's our one recommendation. The next one is for a new position. A new position is our Director of College and Career Readiness. This position was driven by our strategic plan and by daring mission and strategic plan to explore multiple pathways. And there was a action planning group made up of teachers and administration that got together looking at the multiple pathways and their recommendation coming out of multiple pathways. And the recommendation, the action plan, was to hire our Director of College and Career Readiness. So coming out of the action plan, we put together, worked on a job description. We posted that application between our networks. We networked and sent it out to our various groups. We had thirty-two qualified candidates. And when I say thirty-two qualified candidates, thirty-two qualified candidates that had experience in this position, had leadership position at various schools. So this wasn't just thirty-two people that applied, and, you know, they, they had no experience. This was thirty-two qualified candidates. And so from those thirty-two qualified candidates, we did narrow it down to eight qualified candidates and eight great candidates that were brought in for in-person interviews. And part of our interview process isn't just asking them twenty questions. We have them prepare a couple of presentations to our groups. And so they prepare about how to develop a business advisory group and walk us through that. And so we want to see them, we want to see the candidates, how they are going to prepare for their job, how they can present. We ask some follow-up questions. So we really learn a lot rather than just asking twenty interview questions. So those eight candidates, again, I think we could have hired any of them and had a great candidate for this position. But you have to choose one. And so we narrowed that down, and our recommendation is Ben Rodriguez. And Ben comes from Barrington High School. He is currently the Assistant Principal Coordinator of Career Pathways and Community Partnerships. Ben also has a background as an instructional digital age learning, learning coach at Barrington. He also is a teacher out at Alden Hebrew. So I think Ben brings some diversity in the work that he has done at the schools. He's worked at a similar school at Barrington, I think, with educational background. And they've already implemented five college and career pathway endorsements. He comes with glowing recommendations. They are sad to lose them, lose him. We're happy to recommend and hopefully bring Ben to District One Twenty-eight.
So I know we had some concern that we would find sufficient candidates with actual experience in this, because this is a fairly new initiative at many schools. But I'm, I'm glad to see we, we had that kind of response, and it, it says a little something about District One Twenty-eight and the, how people perceive the opportunities here to, to come on this team and, you know, really make a difference. So that's good, good information.
So I wanted to expand a little bit because this is exciting for District One.
Yeah, thank you. Can we have a motion in a second for this?
Rooney, I motion to accept the employment of employees as presented.
Carmichael, second.
Any other questions or comments? Congratulations, we look forward to meeting those votes. Roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Real quick, Ben wants to say thank you, he had a doctoral class tonight, otherwise he would have come to the board meeting, but. He's still learning, so that's where he is tonight.
It's a good excuse.
That's where we want him to be.
Also want to welcome back Nurse Dante, it's nice to see another person returning back to the district.
Okay, that concludes the program and personnel, I will turn it over to. Facilities and Finance.
Okay. Items F through I are building maintenance projects, which we routinely undertake each summer. Obviously easier when the students are out of the building. To keep our facilities in tip-top shape. One positive note, the majority of these are actually coming in underestimate. So I want to thank both Mark and Dan for your excellent work in. Making sure these projects can be accomplished in a fiscally responsible manner. We'll start with item F, the bid recommendation for LHS washrooms. Dan or Mark, do you have any comments?
Any credit goes to Mark. But I I'll I'll turn these over to Mark, just to give a brief, like, we're not bringing all these because we. We want to spend your time doing this, there's state laws that require. If you're going to engage in contracts that over certain thresholds, like you have to bid it out and that board has to approve it, so that's why. We're bringing these two for you, the washrooms and the asbestos. The other two projects, one is under the bidding threshold and so that's where we're bringing this to you, the other one is under a co-op, national co-op. Contract which already bids this workout nation nationally and complies with Illinois state laws, so. These four projects that are these four things that you're going to see. The reason we're bringing them to you is because of the state level, we think it's good practice so that there's transparency in terms of. What we're doing with the money.
Thank you for that context.
Okay, our first project is for. LHS remodel LHS washrooms. We're looking for a motion for the board to approve a bid from Ephraim Carlson and Son Incorporated. For the LHS washroom remodel in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand. Some background on the project though, we had three contractors. Come to the mandatory pre-bid. We received two bids and Ephraim was the lowest bid. There is a twenty-five thousand dollar allowance. In this bid for the project.
Okay. Go, no, go ahead.
Great, Benjamin, I move to approve the. Capital project of remodeling two washrooms at LHS.
Do you mind adding Ephraim Carlson in the amount?
Yes, from Ephraim Carlson and Son for the amount of three hundred thousand seventy-two, I'm sorry, three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars.
Batson, second.
All right, roll call, please, Carol.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes.
Our second project is in conjunction with the washroom remodel at Libertyville High School. We're asking the board to. Do a motion to approve a bid from Colfax Corporation for the LHS asbestos abatement. In the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. So background, we received. Two, two bids were submitted, Colfax was the low bid. As part of this bid, there is a ten thousand dollar contingency included in this bid.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the bid from Colfax Corporation for the LHS asbestos abatement in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars?
That's in a move to approve the bid from Colfax Corporation for the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. For the asbestos abatement at Libertyville High School.
Hessel, second.
Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Right, moving on to item H, LHS wheelchair lift replacement.
Yeah, so we're asking the board the board for a motion to approve agreement with Garaventa USA Incorporated. To replace the LHS wheelchair lift. In the amount of forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is the wheelchair lift that is in the cafeteria hallway that goes to the lower section down to the. Applied Arts Industrial Arts section of the building. It is, be honest, useful life. We've been repairing it on and on, it hasn't been consistent for the kids to get down for their classes, so. Time for a replacement of it.
Okay, time to replace it. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement with Garaventa USA Incorporated to replace the LHS wheelchair lift for forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars?
Carmichael, so moved.
Hessel, second.
Roll call.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes, moving on to item I. The VHS Stadium scoreboard replacement, the last item on our summer project list.
As Dan mentioned, this is co-op pricing, so it is a national bid pricing. So we're asking the board to approve the proposal to replace the VHS, VHS Stadium scoreboard. By Severt Electric in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. So they will remove the existing scoreboard, replace the wiring. And install the new scoreboard.
Does this one include pyrotechnics, so fireworks go off every time the cooker score, or is that not part of this bid?
That is not, unfortunately, that is not part of this.
Just checking.
No jumbo.
Sorry to disappoint you.
No jumbo scoreboard. This is.
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
Proposal.
Vernon Hills Athletic Director. This is the scoreboard that he he would wish to replace the one that's existing.
Well, as the one that we have now is past its useful life.
Yeah.
I would be delighted, Hessel, to approve the proposal to replace the VHS Stadium scoreboard by Severt Electric. For fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Rooney, second. Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Right, motion passes and that concludes the items for facilities and finance tonight.
Thank you very much, moving on to items for information, first on the list is our superintendent's report, I'll turn it over to Dr. Herman.
Great, thank you, and Bo, if you could call up the slide.
Good evening to the board and to our faculty who are in the audience. I wanted to make sure that the superintendent's report this month was in response to the letter that we received. That was read by Sarah Greenswag on behalf of the union membership. Sharing with the board and myself some concerns about some specific issues. So tonight, we are going to be focusing with some information to update the board on our efforts for timely and effective communication. Following this at our April tenth meeting, we will be giving information about allocation of resource. Resources with focus on special education staffing. We will also have information about maintaining high expectations for student achievement. And and what that would look like moving forward at the April committee meeting. Then, the two additional items that were brought to our attention, maintaining high expectations for student behavior. As well as morale across the district will be discussed at the April twenty-fourth board meeting. Okay, we wanted to make sure that we gave each of these subjects. They're they're due in terms of having a thoughtful discussion and letting people know what our plans are moving forward. Next slide. So, starting with internal communication. During the message that was read, there was some information, an example about needing to have clearer. Information and actually Jasmine brought that up tonight too, so I think it's timely that we maybe start with that particular example. So, the, the contention was that the final exam schedule has not been communicated to staff or students, making it difficult to plan the end of year experience. And adding stress for our students and definitely agree that. Drawing out any deadlines add stress to any of us. One of the things that's important to note about this is back in January, and I'll go over that timeline in a minute. We had developed a union and administration's ad hoc committee to work to solve this collaboration together. So. Knowing that we had union representation and administration working on the problem. I'd want to make sure that one of the things we work on is how to ensure joint communication is coming out of those joint. Meeting efforts, because it's really important that. Taking time to collaborate does take longer. And so it's going to be important that we make sure that when we have ad hoc committees working together, that both the students know. Who is representing them from the faculty and or administration, so that you're able to follow up with those people. Next slide. So I wanted to talk about the timeline because setting a calendar can usually be a technical kind of solution. Where you look at some of the basic information and you make a decision. However, because we had some new information about the schedule that we tried in December, having it beyond two days. We wanted to make sure that we implemented those two days to see how did it go for makeups, especially students who had special needs and extended testing time. So when we came back in January, our plan all along was to make sure we gathered feedback from those most greatly impacted. And then to use that information to inform the second semester final exam schedule, we wanted to learn from December. In order to make the projection for May. When we brought this topic to the Labor Management Committee meeting. It was discussed and asked that the union have the opportunity to name specific members, so that was representation from both schools. And different departments, which we very much respected. So we were able to identify the people on the committee. The committee met two different times, talking about options. Then we sent the draft of our information to our attorney, because again. It was going up against some of the ideas of three hundred minutes and there were some. Questions that some of the teachers had versus some of the administrators had, so we wanted to make sure that we got something that we knew was sound. And that we wouldn't have to come back and change. Then we received feedback from our attorney and we did publish the final schedule. So it's important to me to note that. When we're trying to be more inclusive and honor teacher voice, sometimes it is going to take longer. And I take responsibility for making sure, as I know the the teachers on on the committees do also. Making sure that people know what's going on in those committees as the decision is being made. So that's one thing that truth in advertising, we are going to, if we're honoring. Collaboration, it's going to take a little bit longer. But I am committed to making sure that these processes are made more transparent to everyone. And that we have, again, it was communicated to everyone on March first. I I apologize if it wasn't directly emailed to students, that is something we'll have to put in our plan moving forward, so thank you for bringing that to us. Next slide. The other thing I wanted to bring up is although that definitely was a concern noted by Sarah in her letter. There have been some things that we've been doing this last year to try and improve our both internal and external communication. So firstly, talking about the internal. Making sure that as we're talking about strategic plan or talking about things that are non-technical but rather adaptive. Making sure that we not only have email or things like that, but we're meeting regularly face-to-face. So this last fall, we started having Labor Management Committee meetings and that is one hour per month. Where leadership from the union and leadership from administration gets together, we collaboratively set the agenda. Albeit, there usually is more things to talk about than what one hour allows, we do our best to prioritize. But that has been something that we feel will continue to grow in its efficiency and making sure that everyone feels. Needs can be brought to that group. The second thing is Bryant also meets with our ESP leadership team, although it's not a union. We do honor leaders from both buildings who and district office who come together and make sure that we understand any ESP concerns. And that they have their voice in terms of moving forward with things that affect their work. And lastly, are all administration meetings, they were quarterly last year. But knowing that the implementation of the strategic plan was going to take a lot more information and making sure everyone was in the know. We switched to having those be monthly. So that all administrators, all department chairs, people with whom teachers work most closely. Are on the ground floor in terms of knowing what training might be available, what's coming up next. So all of those are things we've done to increase collaboration while decisions are being made, or at least having all voices heard at the table. The other thing that we did last fall and you heard the presentations was making sure we had teacher voice and staff voice. On our strategic planning teams, the equity and inclusion, the health and wellbeing and exploring multiple paths, all had. Teachers, administrators, ESP. And and lots of different input throughout the whole first semester. Next slide. The other thing that we did, we heard from staff that with some new administrators, they wanted to have the time to get to know people more personally. And so from staff request, we, we, I should say they, our four new administrators put out a request to meet. Informally with all of our teachers or faculty or anyone who wanted to come for four different lunch dates. So all four lunch periods during January, February, March and April, lunches provided. And trying to make sure that they're putting a face with a name, that it's not just an email you're receiving from this person. And that questions and other kinds of concerns can be shared. In addition, I did a similar thing where I offered, rather than lunches though, I made sure that I made myself available. February, March and April, I had February's at both schools, last week I did Vernon Hills. Thursday morning, I do a Libertyville, and again, it's forty-five minutes where the agenda is set by the people who attend. And my job is to try and listen to concerns and answer questions. And some of those things have already been things that we've talked about at the Labor Management Committee, but it's always good to hear. From specific teachers or to ask follow-ups and how those things are progressing. One other thing that we did was to try and make sure that the strategic plan was communicated as broadly as possible, one was to the community. So Mary and our communication people worked to put together a mailer that was sent to every person in our community. That summarized where we were with our goals and how we got there and how all of this is linked to our daring mission. In addition, we updated our website, so all of this information is made available there, this is definitely more external types of communication. But I want to compliment Mary on a great job done with that mailer. Next slide. Following that, we wanted to make sure that our staff, several staff participated on these committees, but many others didn't. And so we wanted to, in addition to having it posted on the website or emailed to everybody, to have face-to-face opportunities for. People to come and be able to ask questions of the people who chaired these committees. So we had the invitation and those were held at Libertyville and Vernon Hills in early February. Next slide. And if if we needed one more method, we had also a wonderful podcast, so for people who maybe their schedules wouldn't allow for them to come to lunch. But still wanted to learn more, Mary did a great job producing a podcast on RD One Twenty-Eight Daring Podcast. That focused on the strategic plan and there are many other wonderful podcasts available on the website, but this one I think was particularly strong. Finally, I wanted to show an example of internal communication that's at the district leadership team level. We have continued to try and set expectations for ourselves, so we're making decisions as clear and as. Collective and collaborative as possible, but one of the things that we know from hearing from teachers is sometimes things that were decided in DLT. Were not as effectively communicated down to departments or classroom level or other things like that. So you'll see that we in January changed the way that we set up our agendas. Where we are being very clear on what's the background information, who's presenting this, what, if if there is any data or anything that's linking to it. But the more important part is being very clear with each agenda item, if there was a decision made and then the communication plan for that. So as you noted, we, we, we hear the concerns about timely and effective feedback and we've put it into our protocols and practices. And hopefully you'll continue to see an improvement. And hopefully you'll continue to see an improvement in that particular strategy. Next up. So next steps, actually, Mary and I had two very wonderful conversations recently with some. External audit because you can do a lot internal and Mary has done a lot to make sure that we're using our resources effectively as possible. But one other thing that's helpful when you're talking about communication is to have someone from the outside come in. And interview teachers or union representatives or faculty, excuse me, or. Board members, other people like that to say what's working and what's not. So we are prepared to engage in that because we want our own internal perspective as well as that from the outside. So we will be engaging in a communications audit. And that will then result in recommendations that we can use over the summer to put together a five-year communication plan. The other thing Mary is working and will present at the April meeting, a positive messaging campaign. And then finally, a result of that communication audit would be ongoing refresh of the website. So we saw the strategic plan page added, we know that there are some other things that people have pointed out to us that need to be updated. In terms of relevancy and other things like that, so that the summertime will be great to reinforce those things. So I wanted to make sure that the board understood the different kinds of efforts we're putting into improving communication. Last Thursday, we had a meeting with Labor Management, I was out sick that day, so I couldn't attend. But I know that there were very thoughtful and passionate information about some of the things that were on the. Letter that we had, so there was additional information brought about student conduct and behavior. There was additional concerns about special ed staffing. So the things that they brought to the board's attention, we are continuing to have ongoing dialogue with the union in relation to making sure. Any decision we make is communicated clearly and effectively and any concerns that the teachers have are brought to us so that we can respond. So I'll take any questions that the board might have about what we're doing with communication. And what next steps any of you might like to see in terms of improved communication.
The new kids on the block conversations, those took place already this year, that was in twenty twenty-three or that was in twenty twenty-two.
That was, it started this year, we've done two so far. Well, we have our second one at Vernon Hills on Wednesday, actually.
And there'll be four.
And then we're going to repeat it again before the school year.
Okay, thank you.
What did those look like and how did it go?
Um, it's been more informal, get to know each other, you know, talk about, you know. I have to watch Ted Lasso I learned at Libertyville High School last week.
That's true.
So I found out I don't have Apple TV at home, so I'm going to have to figure that out. But just, you know, get to know each other conversations. There was a handful of conversations last week about the heterogeneous. Conversations that Larry has been leading around what that will look like in the future. And there was some thoughts about that, but mostly informal.
Aman, do you have anything to add?
Nope, my counterpart said it all. It was really just an opportunity for. Us to get to know the staff more, especially being that some of our work has been siloed in different departments. So it's been wonderful to get to know people from the entire building. But it was, it's really just a get to know as well as an opportunity to hear concerns, but then also to also to share. Things that have already been done and to to talk about like where we're going from here.
Logistically, how does that work though if the teacher that was during lunch, is that?
Yep, so.
How are the teachers able to come in and do that their lunch?
So yeah, so basically they come in during their lunch, if they so choose to, is completely volunteer voluntary. And then basically we provide lunch, so the first time we did it, we did soup. Soup and chat and then this last pass one that we did and then we're at Vernon Hills on Wednesday. It's nacho taco, so it'll be Mexican food and we'll chat. And so they come down, we pretty much sit at different tables. And then they just sit with whomever they want to sit with and we just have, you know, a really good discussion. So they've been really good.
I appreciate that you guys are doing that with so many new faces in administration. It it's important to in develop a working relationship with the folks in the buildings. And one way to do that is just be able to put names and faces and. Talk about things like Ted Lasso and develop a relationship so that you can work together going forward.
Yeah, I think that is important to develop relationships. That should be the foundation of anything that we do regarding our work. Because that establishes trust. And then it also allows allows each stakeholder to feel comfortable. With coming to us and sharing concerns and us, you know, providing them feedback and them being open and willing to do so. But without that, we could do that without having those relationships.
Do you feel like you've met enough of that? Here's why I'm asking, I'm going to take my teacher head off. I can't meet with you at lunch because I have, I know what it is to be a teacher in the building. Do you, I can't use my lunch to come meet you as much as I want to. Do you think that now that you have done it, that there might be a better? Did you get the kind of reception or at least the numbers that you were expecting? Or now that you've done it once, do you think that it might be better to have a different timeframe so that you get to more?
So while I will say that we have yet to meet each and every, whether it's teachers, staff members. Because we're targeting everybody throughout the entire district. And while we have not met everyone, every stakeholder, we have had quite crowded. Lunchrooms, so they've been very well attended. Yeah, so but I do understand what you're saying, not every person is that is able to come down during the lunch. And so we'll regroup and figure out how to reach those individuals who are not able to come.
But that is why when scheduling mine, I did mine before school to try and optimize. So if they aren't able to maybe have their question asked at a new kids on the block, I tried to offer morning sessions. Especially that being probably optimum of before or after, because so many people coach or have other kinds of obligations after. So between the different forums, we are trying to make sure that there's opportunity for different people based on their schedule. To make sure they they can have a voice. One last thing I wanted to share, in addition to giving the board an update based on the concern as to how we're moving forward. I have requested a face-to-face meeting with both Sarah Greenswag, the author of the letter, and Dennis Duffy, the union president. So we will be having an in-person conversation on Friday related to these communication efforts and then the timeline. And other things that they would want to make sure we know so that these concerns continue to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, we have a D one twenty-eight community education update. We are discontinuing that program at the end of the year. But I know Bryant Kelly has been working diligently to turn over some of our most popular programs. To some of our community partners and has already been successful at implementing one of the most popular programs. So I'm going to turn it over to Bryant for an update on that.
Thank you. So just a quick update and it is posted in the agenda. That we did meet with representatives from both the Village of Libertyville and the Vernon Hills Park District. Looking at some of the courses that we offered, we shared, we shared a massive spreadsheet. Paper copies of all of our contact information of. Our instructors, some of the instructors had actually already reached out to. Both the Village of Libertyville and Park District interested in continuing their. Because we had communicated with them, so the instructors knew this was all coming, but some wanted to really get a jump start on. Being able to off, continue to offer their courses through both the villages. We do have some courses that will be starting this summer at Libertyville High School. So we're coordinating with John Fishel, our rental coordinator, and he'll schedule. You know, the the location of, we don't have as many in the room because they, their scheduling was kind of already done at that point. The other thing is that for Vernon Hill, they do have a lot more facilities of their own to be able to run their classes. So they are taking over classes, they may not all come here because they have facilities and they obviously want their residents to use their facilities. Libertyville is, like I said, they've already taken some and they'll be in the school this summer. One of the other big programs that we have right now in community education is our North Suburban Wind Ensemble. So I have spoken directly with Randy Sundell, who currently works here at Vernon Hills and Don Shoup, who retired from Libertyville High School. And we are going to take over that program, District one twenty-eight, similar to how we run our master swim program. And so, you know, Randy and and Don work directly with myself. And also finance department chairs, scheduling space, registration can all be done online. We have the software to do that and so that program will continue. They're happy with the setup, I think that Drew Russell and Dustin Helby, they were already scheduling the space. But they were kind of doing it through community ed and back to Don and now they're just going to go directly to Don and Randy. And I think it'll be a win-win, we'll still have some of the shows that they put on. And we'll, you know, again, they work around our schedule to try and get those in the auditorium. And so I still see it being a great opportunity. And again, much like master swim, we're not looking to make money, we're looking to be able to pay the instructors and break even. And it's not costing anything else on the backside because it's stuff that we're already doing.
That's great. And I think there wasn't an expectation that we have tons, be hosting tons of programs over the summer. And when do you think it's reasonable to give us another update, maybe in three months?
Probably give one maybe in the summer, you know, late spring, summer. I think when we were talking to Libertyville and Vernon Hills last, that they'll have more stuff for the fall. And I, and then I see like some of the woodworking classes, the cooking classes, those type that, you know, we have the facilities. They're, you know, they'll really jump on, the summer is tough, we never had a huge summer offering. Because people don't sign up because it's nice outside, they're going on vacation, they're not around and things, so. But I can give another update.
So like July-ish? Yeah, okay, that'd be great. Thank you for your efforts on that and thank you to our community partners. Okay, item C, board comments and events. Who would like to kick us off? Thank you.
I've been very busy, so little report.
Too tough.
A little report. Okay, so I had the distinct honor of visiting both buildings. Back on Wednesday, March eighth, I was. Dr. K and Dr. G very graciously coordinated visits for me, so I got to get into the building and see what's just going on with her. With our students, with our teachers and get kind of a flavor for where we're at right now as a school community. And it was so, so lovely and I had the time of my life and I said I was like walking on sunshine for the next few days, it was great. So some highlights from my building visit to Vernon Hills, I got to see some student. Kind of ideated projects from the STEM lab and I was walked through each of those. Some really, really cool things the kids are doing, studying genes and. Very ethical animal experimentation and, you know, different PHs within various. Growth environments for water and soil and just, it was incredible to see what each student had identified as kind of their passion project. With regard to STEM. And what's great about that STEM class and maybe, Dr. G, can you, can you tell me the name of the teacher? I left my notes in my car, but the name of my, the teacher who walked us through and the name of the class exactly?
Amy.
Yep.
Amy Elliott.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry to quiz you. And the class was called, can you remind me?
Science STEM capstone.
Yeah, capstone. So there were students from a variety of different grade levels who can take that class. Which is nice, it's not like limiting in any particular grade level, it's not just like a seniors-only class or whatever, so super, super cool. Then I had the pleasure of sitting in on a book discussion in. Ms. Wendy Meister's class with some of our EL students. They were reading a graphic novel, novel by George Takei about Japanese internment camps. That was absolutely fabulous to hear them discussing their annotations from the novel. And kind of exchanging ideas about the book and hearing them practice their English in terms of a. Really comprehensive book discussion, so I was totally impressed, blown away and I really love the sense of community. That Wendy fosters within her classroom, it's, it's just beautiful to see. I was able to take a visit over to the language lab, I got to see Ms. Naylor's class in action. And they were all having really wonderful discussions in Spanish. I got to see how that space works. I was treated to a fantastic legitimate cafe latte, is that what we got? What was the special?
Yeah, I think we got a mocha latte.
Yeah, mocha latte, just a little bit of mocha, it was, it rivaled, you know, like real coffee shops, it was fantastic. We hope to have one day some caffeine for our LHS students as well. I know you'll be gone, you won't even benefit from it, but you know what I mean. And then I was able to see a special education classroom in action. Working mostly on math, lots of manipulatives. And so we had students with kind of varying levels of math ability. Who are all in a classroom and all receiving really wonderful individualized curriculum. According to their various areas of study, which was wonderful. And then we kind of rounded out our morning with a performance of some bluegrass music down in the Studio Theater for World Languages Week. And that was a romping good time and everyone was clapping and toe tapping and it was a great day to be a cougar. Then over at Libertyville High School on the tenth, I got to take a very enlightening security tour with Mr. Bob Ulix. I got to sit in on an AP Euro class with Mr. O'Neill, talking about Russian help, what were we talking about? You're not taking, no, I'm. Thank you, thank you, Stalin, yes. Oh my gosh, yes, riveting, excellent stuff going on there. I got to visit both Jazzy and Sarah in the DOI classroom and can you hear what they're working on? And just, we talked about, you know, the the historical importance of the DOI in our school community. Very exciting to see what they, what they do day to day and just the level of discussion that was happening in that classroom was quite impressive. I also got to visit Consumer Sciences class with Ms. Kristen Terrence. Lots of beautiful cooking and just, you know, learning about being a informed consumer in that class. But also making use of our beautiful new consumer facilities, so that was great. I was treated to a percussion performance from, it was Northwestern, is that correct?
It was Dennison.
Or Dennison, my mistake. That was what it was, someone was wearing a Northwestern shirt in their group and I'm just tying together. Anyhow, that was coordinated by Adam Gore, Matt Karnstadt and Dustin Helby. That was fantastic, you could tell the students were really engaged in these visiting performers. And, you know, they were kind of giving them a glimpse into what music education could look like for them beyond high school. So that was very cool to see, connecting the dots between their experience here in one twenty-eight and moving forward. I also got to sit in on an algebra class, which I really, you know. Mr. Gilliam, Dr. Gilliam was my, I think you're my Algebra II teacher, is that possible? Algebra II and I'm still just as confused as ever.
That hurts.
Yeah, and the weirdest part of it was this was, the room I was sitting in was your Algebra II classroom. So I was having, it was, it was a moment for me, it was, yeah. But, but the kids seemed to get it, which I think is fabulous, no, and the teachers, Lisa Davis and John Taylor. Were doing an exceptional job instructing our students. We rounded off our morning, well, Dr. K treated me to lunch, which was very kind. Got to try all of our new Quest Food Service options, had a delicious fresh. Got to try all of our new Quest Food Service options. Had a delicious fresh salad. It was fantastic. I also got to see a salsa dancing lesson for World Languages Week. And that was put together by Mr. Tony Avila, Ms. Jenny Getch, great, and Ms. Jen Crane. Very, very fun. Like how Vernon Hills had for their World Languages Week, some live musical performances. Mr. Avila is actually part of a salsa dancing competitive group. And so it was very, very. Interesting to see how his students got to see him in a different capacity, not just instructing him, but exploring one of his passions with them. It was wonderful. And last, but.
Minds want to know, did you salsa?
I did in my seat. I like didn't get up, but I moved my feet with, yes, they were, I mean, he's a great teacher. And then last but certainly not least, I was welcomed into the Women's Unity Lunch within the Wildcat Wellness Space. Hosted by Dr. Brandon Nelson and Ms. Anne Weeks. I'm, I don't, Singleton. Was she Weeks at one point?
Maybe that's would precede me.
Okay, my mistake. Anne Singleton.
They're saying Adam's got a yes going.
Yep, Adam confirms.
Okay, I'm so sorry. For some reason, my notes are wrong, but anyhow, I do know who Anne is. I just didn't know that was her last. But anyhow, now I do. It was fantastic though. They had students who. You know, women, but then also students who support their female peers in the space. Coming together for some women's history learning and it was fantastic. While I was there and I again. Apologize for the length of this, but I'm hope, I'm hoping to illustrate, you know, if you haven't gotten a chance to get into the buildings lately, just how exciting it is right now. While I was there, I was invited by Dr. Nelson to attend Green Dot bystander training. And so I've completed half of my training and I plan to complete the other half either during April or May. It's a really important training that, that Libertyville approaches so, so well. They tried to reach as many of their students as possible to become trained in what to do as a bystander when. Moments of bullying, violence, et cetera, happen before them, whether in school or otherwise. And I think that training really lends itself to. You know, just kind of, and I'm sure some of our Libertyville students can speak to it, just kind of the good vibe happening in the building. So. I know there is talk about Vernon Hills adopting a similar, well, not a similar, the same program. And I heard there's even some. Teachers, possibly some student delegates coming over to be bystander trained as well. So I was really happy to hear that. So we can have that program in both of our schools. So that was the school visit. Then I went to the superintendent roundtables last week. Hosted by Dr. Herman and listened to the concerns of a very important stakeholder group, our teachers. Was happy to see some of that reviewed this evening. And then I believe, oh, the last thing. I did was attend the student rep lunch last week at Lazy Dog with these fantastic student reps. We had some really interesting conversations, especially about their future plans. And it was, it was just, you know, I'm always blown away when I get to sit down and speak with our students. They're so sharp. They're so knowledgeable. They're wise beyond their years. We have incredible young people and we are lucky that they are ours. So thank you for, for having me there. And I'm done.
Boy, how do you top that? That's, you don't.
I say that's enough. I know, there's no way you can't.
Yeah, yeah. I just had a couple of things to, to, uh, thank you for those who made it out to the Lakes Division Meeting, the. Illinois Association of School Boards, Lakes Division Meeting up in Fox Lake. We drove up to Fox Lake for that. I think we have a planning session coming up in May for the, for the fall meeting. So more information on that to come. And then I know Lisa, I saw your face on the screen with the Ed Red Quarterly Board Member. Meeting. There, I'm surprised there are not more. I'm disappointed there are not more people attending that, but it's very informative.
Was very well represented, but there were not a lot of districts. It's open to all suburban school districts. And I think we were both surprised. We, we were very well represented, but there were not. More than a handful of districts that participated. And it's really great information.
Yeah, it's, it's a good way to really keep up with, with what's going on in the state and especially in Springfield. So. That's what I do. And it is a short month. I mean, it's only the third week now, so. You just are overachieving. Yeah, thank you.
Found some time this month and I had some things I've been wanting to do, so.
Yeah, no, that's a good, good experience. I think we all should do that at some point.
Anybody else have anything they want to share?
Okay, moving on to the CDAL report.
Yep, something brief. Promise it's brief. Just some highlights. I actually was unable to attend the meeting. I had a condolence call that I needed to pay that evening. But we were still able to meet our quorum and get our business done. But from the minutes, I've kind of just still done some highlights. There is a downward trend in enrollment right now due to staff shortages. So staffing challenges are actually dictating enrollment, which that's. A shame, because that means less students get to. Benefit from the services that the CDAL offers, which are quite specialized. But the district administration is working to hire through the use of multiple agencies. But like everywhere, there is just a teacher shortage. So it continues to be a challenge. CDAL is in the process of purchasing Fairhaven School. Currently rents space from Fairhaven. But this, so this will be so that we may add this property as a permanent home for some of our CDAL programs. And if all goes well, we close on the property. On July first. So we're looking to add that to our real estate portfolio, if you will. And then there is a fundraiser, a CDAL Foundation Dinner Dance coming up on April twenty first. This raises money for the CDAL Foundation. And if you would like more information, you can find. Info on how to purchase tickets and attend on the CDAL website.
Thank you and thank you for being our delicate for that important partnership we have with the Special Education District of Lake County. Any other reports that board members would like to share? Okay, seeing none. Let's talk about future agenda items. We have six listed for April. We have administrative staff contract renewals. The twenty-three, twenty-four ESP staffing, the twenty-three, twenty-four textbook adoption requests. The amended fiscal year twenty-three consolidated district plan. What is that?
You won't actually need to have that anymore. So every year there's a consolidated district plan that's filed with his being approved by the board. You'll see the following month is fiscal twenty-four one. We needed to amend our fiscal twenty-three and we thought we would need. Board approval for the amendment, but it doesn't appear that we may need it. So.
Okay, this is just a placeholder. We may not hear more on that. Okay, great. We have an item online instructional services, which we look very forward to hearing about and seeing materials on. And a special reorganizational meeting following the regular board meeting. Hopefully, I should have said this at the beginning of the meeting. Although the school board elections in our area are uncontested, the village. Elections are contested and I hope everybody is registered to vote, plans to vote. These local elections really do matter. And if you aren't registered to vote, you can go to.
So, sorry, you can't register to vote online anymore. You need to just same day register at polling places. It's open at any of the early voting places. Which you can find on the Lake County Clerk's website.
So if you need any information about voting, it's on the Lake County Clerk website.
Yeah, and if you want to find, if you need to find your polling place, it's also there because I know that some polling places, especially in the southeast. Part of Libertyville Township shifted.
Thank you. So we will have our special reorganizational meeting following our regular board meeting because that will be the first meeting after the election. In May, we have several items, which I won't read all of them coming up. Are there any additional future agenda items that board members would like to discuss?
I would like to see some clubs come and present what, what they're doing. I mean, if I could nominate, I haven't spoken to Ms. Cotton. But I think the Ecos Club would be. I'd like, I think they're doing some great work. If they can come and share, I think we should be all proud of what they're doing. And the only other thing which I also mentioned at the committee meeting is. Some kind of a regular update on the strategic plan work. We don't need a detailed. Uh, update on all those items, but if, if you had a running list of, you know, all the things that we are working on and. High level summary of them. That'd be good.
Thank you. I can definitely work with the team to put that together.
And Ms. Colcarney, Dr. Herman and I had discussed Ecos coming to the committee meeting in April. Because they are working on a fairly large grant. And before they submit the grant, they wanted to present it to the Board of Education because. It's, it's a sizable grant through the state of Illinois and could. Would have, we would need board approval to. Officially apply for this and go after the project because it's a couple hundred thousand dollars and would do some substantial capital improvement. To our north parking lot. So they want to share all the work they've been doing, but then this is sort of. Sort of their, their swing for the fences kind of effort. But before they hit submit on that, we need to make sure all the members of our district are aware and approving. That if we were to get this grant, this would be something we would support.
Absolutely. Very exciting. Look forward to hearing that. You said at the April committee meeting.
That was what we had discussed and the group is just waiting confirmation of that.
Sounds great. Look forward to hearing on that. Any other future agenda items?
Dr. Herman, I think, I, I, I think I'd like to ask for just an update after hearing so much public commentary tonight about the graduation. Plans potentially for next year. Just kind of how, how you plan to, oh, I'm sorry. I think my mic is on. I'm just too far away. Yeah, if you could just provide an update on, on how we plan to proceed.
I would be happy to do that. Dr. Gilliam and I are meeting with a parent group Thursday morning to hear. Clarifying some of their concerns as we've heard, but also then to talk about how can we gather that stakeholder voice? And how can we explore some options? So I will definitely be prepared. We might have a short update for April tenth, but we definitely would have more, a more robust report by the April board meeting.
Thank you.
I mean, just to clarify, I, I think it was made clear, but there is no intention to change graduation for this year. But all the updates certainly can come to us as you have them, so.
Then can we get an update on what's happening with that language lab?
Yes, we, that will be at the April committee meeting. So what's here is the general meeting. And so we definitely will have a conversation before the ESP report, which would be impacted by that conversation.
Great. Any other future agenda items to discuss? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to convene in closed session. For the purpose of discussing employment of an employee under five ILCS one twenty slash two C one. As well as collective negotiation matters under five ILCS one twenty slash two C two.
Carmichael, move to convene in closed session.
Batson, second.
Do we have a roll call or a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Motion passes. We will convene in closed session with a short bio break. So we'll resume in about five minutes. Great. May I please have a motion and a second to return to open session at ten oh seven PM, please?
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson, second.
Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are back in open session. I am looking for a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as discussed in closed session. May I have a motion, please?
Benjamin, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Great. For our discussion, before we approve it, what we have discussed is a contract that will begin July first, twenty twenty-three. It is a five-year contract that will take us through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. It is a performance-based contract. That pays two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars per year with an additional annual contribution to. The four oh three B of twenty thousand dollars per year. It also includes twenty-five days of vacation personal sick bereavement bank. And the contract will be posted online shortly after tonight's meeting. May I please have a motion to, oh, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Lisa, can you please also elaborate where the compensation falls in line with comparable districts?
Very good. Yes, very good point. So this puts Dr. Herman just in the middle, slightly above the middle. For superintendents in our peer districts. And that's for all the superintendents, both elementary and high school districts. Oh, sorry. My apologies. Just high school districts. We, we also. Looked at the same high schools that we looked at when we were negotiating our teacher contract to be sure that we were comparing apples to apples. So this puts Dr. Herman right in the middle. Good question. Thank you.
And I, I think it's important to reiterate your emphasis on performance-based contract, that we do have goals that we. Make sure are adhered to within our strategic plan. So within this contract.
Absolutely. It's not just our job to employ the superintendent. It's our job to hold the superintendent accountable. And Dr. Herman has been a very faithful partner in terms of. Developing goals with metrics and that is, that will, that work to update that for next school year. Will begin in earnest right away. We do that in Super eval. And that is a very important part of our job as a board. We take that very seriously. And we have a very good partner, Dr. Herman, in doing that with us. So. Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Dr. Herman. You are the leader that we have chosen to modernize what excellence looks like in District one twenty-eight and lead. The work to execute our strategic plan and make this district truly daring. So thank you for your work.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we are ready to adjourn the board meeting.
Carmichael, motion to adjourn.
Second, Drumkey.
A voice vote, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? They're better not for you. Seeing none, we are adjourned at ten eleven. Thank you, everybody. Good work.